Please rise for prayer and pledges.
I'm James Drake. Seeking your presence in this courtroom. Father, that the decisions that these gentlemen make for the benefit of the residents of Walker County. Father, we love you and we thank you for all that you do for us. Father, we pray for all those in harm's way and for all of the floods. Father, we thank you for the rains, but Father, we also ask that we guard and protect those towns in the county. Father, I ask Lord that you be with these gentlemen as they make those decisions that are sometimes tough. Father, we got First John four eleven, King James Version. It says, beloved, if God so loved us, we ought to also love one another. Father, that is so true. If we have a relationship through Jesus Christ, we are loved. And we thank you for his life and his willingness to serve. Father, may we follow his example. Go with us and lead us in grace in all that we do. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the Father, we thank the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation, in the end of the soul, with thy tea and justice. Arm of Texas, what I pledge religious to be Texas, one state of God, one.
We've got one citizen's input, Ms. Riggsby, on Adam five and thirty-one. There you are. Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Your Honor and Commissioner, I stand as one with respect for me, humbly again, and for the record, down to number five, and I just ask that we pay careful attention to something. Would you be very careful reviewing as you make the decisions? I say that I spoke with former Judge Hips and Bill Dalbit, who made a few appearances on TV. Bringing a few things to their attention. In stating that, I know things get by our eyes sometimes, and there are some times, maybe. Hopefully not. By choosing to turn our hate against. And on number thirty-one, another payout to Tri-County, they received funds. And yet so many of us in disproportionate areas in precinct three were not only impacted, but severely impacted. And I started in April twenty twenty, asking for funds before they ever became available. And I stand as a voice for the disenfranchised, senior citizens. I could go back and quote some of the numbers that I had jotted down from the CARES Act, involving vulnerable children. In that precinct, over eighty-five percent of our child welfare cases come from that precinct. They're found at least so. And I've said it a number of times, it can be verified, senior citizens raising grandchildren. Many of us lost family members during that time. I can say myself, five within a span of probably twenty-four months took coronavirus. And I'm sorry for everybody else that was affected. I'm asking that we pay careful attention to some of the things. We have attorneys here that represent us. Sometimes things go on deaf ears. I'll look back at the social security case, the largest ever, nobody was willing to listen. No disrespect, great attorney in a country town and a judge pulled it off for a few years. I speak out against this simply because I had to speak to Texas Department of Protective and Regulatory Services. That case appeared in the Huntsville item a few years back, but I had voiced it to supervisors. I had voiced it to the regional director. I had voiced it before the commissioner of the state of Texas there in the Woodlands, my concerns, they finally got heard. So I'm simply saying, please have an ear to hear things that we bring to your attention. I don't want to be here, but I do know this, the God that I serve, he has not failed me to get attention. And I said this before, it shouldn't take a review. Our cases shouldn't be like that of the social security office, have to go to the office of the inspector general, nor the Senate Committee of Homeland Security and Government Affairs before we're heard. In representing those citizens, we have a right to be heard and not only heard, but answered to. Lots of entities got funds dispersed to them, they weren't affected, not severely affected, and we were. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riggsby. Consent agenda contains seventeen items.
Need to pull one and fourteen, Judge.
Fourteen and what?
If I can read that. Which one you pulling, Bill?
Twelve.
Twelve, so I can read it, read the proclamation. Make the motion to approve all the agenda except one, twelve, and fourteen.
I'll second that.
Moving single in favor of your hand, motion carries. Uh, number one, what?
All right, on page three of eight, there's nothing really wrong. I'm just pointing out for another jump item later in court, we did have EMS workshop on April the twenty-second. So anyway, just pointing that number out, I move to approve number one in the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Moving single in favor of your hand, motion carries, number twelve.
Approve proclamation twenty twenty-four dash sixty-one declaring May nineteenth through twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four is Emergency Medical Services Week. With permission, Judge, like to read the proclamation. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service within Walker County. And whereas, the members of Walker County EMS are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency and pre-hospital care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including community outreach and education, personalized care and access to telemedicine. And whereas, the emergency medical services system in Walker County consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, emergency physicians, trained members of the public and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating the medical, emergency medical services week. Now, therefore, Walker County Commissioners Court, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth through twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, being the fiftieth anniversary of EMS Week, as Emergency Medical Services Week, honoring our past, forging our future. So I want to add a little bit to that, with the floods in my precinct especially, they went into some pretty doggone dangerous areas and I appreciate that. So my motion is to approve agenda item number twelve.
Moving single in favor of your hand, okay. Y'all come up.
Don't get a picture with us? Know those back there? You can do it front, you can come back here. Come on back already.
I'll come back.
Already.
Sit down, you'll get behind, there you go, keep me in line.
I'll keep you in line.
Thank you.
Thank y'all, thank y'all. See you later. Riss, have a good one.
Uh, number fourteen, approve amended agreement with Emergency Service District Number Three, extending the date from December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Wait, we skipped fourteen, right?
That is fourteen.
Oh, you did read it, okay.
I probably did. Never mind, it wasn't approved.
That's my motion. But if I can, all in favor, raise your hand. I was wondering.
It was a long day.
You didn't go back, no?
No, that's fine.
Uh-oh, kids Patricia later.
All right, we're going to go to number eighteen, discuss and take action on acceptance of NRA grant funds in the amount of three thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars, Commissioner Barton. On the call.
On approval?
Not until you talk to me about it.
That's a grant we've wired for last fall. We asked for numerous things on there, but ammunition costs. We're able to add an extra session at the gun range, we'll go to pre-qualify, we can go out and actually do, guys can go and practice shoot, can't shoot enough, but anyway, this allows us to do that. That sounds like a lot of money, but it doesn't buy a lot of ammunition.
Not in today's world, it doesn't.
It sure helps, yeah.
Better than not. I'll make the motion to approve. Moving single in favor of your hand, okay. Nineteen, discuss and take action to apply for law enforcement support office grants.
No, that's not.
It says grant, okay.
This is a participation in a state agency program where we can apply for, as you go out and get on a list, they it's army surplus equipment. That's where our six-wheel truck came from, the department, the fire department manages and operates. And since we have inventory, we have to reapply this. And the, I talked to this coward the other day, showed it to her. She had some questions about the versions of it, everything is up to date on it, this is the latest version. That's awesome.
Even though it's dated twenty twenty-one.
Yes, ma'am, this is straight off of their website, the contact person on there. So this is, that's all it has. And move for approval.
Let's take out grant.
Without, well, taken out.
I'll second that.
Moving single in all, first raise your hand, motion carries.
Have a good one, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
We should, I need to. Are you wanting to do it later? Come by.
It's quick.
You got about ten seconds.
Nine, eight. Not that one. One for us and I'm going to fly this coward from the original as well.
Do you get more by calling about her last name?
Yeah, yeah, let me try that.
Raise.
I don't know if I'm going to change what I say.
It wouldn't hurt. It never hurts me. Yeah, thank you, Forrest.
Number twenty, discuss and take action to approve the ad hoc dynamic support agreement for professional services and support dynamic software.
Understand approval?
It may help you more, it hurts you.
Not hurt you.
It's going probably hard for you, Michelle, if you had been saying, wait.
I was trying to give him bits of that.
No, I'm going to just say it.
This is an agreement to allow Danny S. to have Dynamics, provide some software upgrades when needed. Ms. Allen can probably attest to more of the needs than I can. However, it is a, it does need y'all's approval for us to move forward with things.
What is it, Ms. Allen? I know, I've read it, but it don't mean nothing to me.
It basically is a contract to use on an hourly basis, this number, when we need assistance with coding and things related to our software, both Dynamics and RBI, just whichever software we're needing help with.
They're proud of themselves, I know that. So I'm claiming we have money to pull that from.
We have budgeted money, and this rate is actually a little bit less than we're paying some other vendors, but yes, it's very expensive.
And I'll make a motion to approve, so number twenty.
Moving single in favor of your hand, motion carries. Twenty-one, discuss and take action on upgrading and replacing camera security system at precinct four, road and bridge office and storage barn to include one-year monitoring service.
So the camera systems out at Road and Bridge Four, or have been in place. I mean, used a long time. And the cameras, I mean, you can see the images, but that's all you can see is a blob going across. So the request to upgrade that camera system and add cameras out at the, I called it the equipment farm, would allow for that to be monitored as well. Also, the current vendor was not responsive in timely manner, would not come out and fix the existing. So we held a site visit and resources, security resources has come out and provided us this bid to upgrade and supply the cameras needed for the barn.
No, they've been in a pretty good while, and I was here when we put them in place. I think Tim was still on, on the time.
So with the addition to the barn, the inside equipment is not robust enough to handle all of it. So that is why we're upgrading the camera system on the inside as well. Bringing it all up to, to.
I would say now that we've told them it doesn't work, you need to hurry up and get it fixed. Quentin's shaking his head.
Just coming out of Brandon's month, so that's the question.
What's that for you, the security stuff doing?
No, not, not, not unless it's JP, it doesn't fall under JP stuff, right?
That's correct, now I think the next one we.
The next one. So make motion to approve this item out of Road and Bridge Funds.
Road Base Four?
Road Base Four, excuse me.
I'm going to watch the other three.
We've been looking at you.
I'll second it, all in favor, raise your hand.
Yeah, we all looking.
Twenty-two, discuss and take action on replacing security system at JP Four Office to include one year of monitoring.
And this as well, is goes along with that. The current vendor was not responsive, would not come fix the equipment, was delayed. And so when we got security resources to come out and do full, we got them to look at the JP's office as well. And this is their proposal to replace that. The monitoring, if we pay upfront, we get a ten percent discount for a whole year, if we pay upfront for a whole year, same with RMB four, so.
And they had to pay the whole year.
Up front for a whole year of monitoring, and we're saving like three hundred dollars from the existing vendor to the new vendor.
And we have funds set us up for that? We have funds for that?
Yes, there's special JP security funds for that.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the security system at JP Four Office to include one year of monitoring funded from the Justice Court Security Fund.
I'll second that.
Moving single in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Thank you, Michelle. Treasurer, discuss and take action to approve TAC mandatory cybersecurity training. Want to name it?
So this is a requirement of Texas Government Code two oh five four, two oh five four point five one nine one. We've been doing this now for multiple years, so I need your approval to, one, say that we're going to do it, which is mandatory. Two, TAC has always done it for free for us, this year they're charging five dollars per user. They let me know last year, so I've actually got it put in the budget for this year. We budgeted for four hundred employees, we usually have around three hundred, because it's any employee, like twenty-five percent of the time. So it's not all of them, so I'm just requesting your approval to get us enrolled with TAC, so then they can send out our links and everybody can do the training by August thirty-first.
So you need the money for this year, though?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
You're doing all right, Tim.
I'll make a motion, exception number twenty-three.
Moving single in favor, raise your hand, okay. Twenty-four, discuss and take action on changing title, job description, and pay group for OEM, which isn't here, but I'll ask the pastor, he can get here, he's a little busy.
Yeah, I doubt if he makes it.
Yeah. So pass on twenty-four. Twenty-five, discuss and take action on the purchase of PR recruiting supplies from current EMS budget.
Okay. I kind of asked this question in the past at budget time, and we haven't ever really gotten any traction on it. We have to bring on the six people that you guys approved us to bring on, so in order to do that, like, we're trying to go do a ton of job bears, EMS programs at different schools, community events, to try to get applicants for these positions. It would be really nice if we could get some kind of like recruiting or PR supplies. Because now, no fit, no, flyers, things like that. I briefly spoke with Cheryl and she said she didn't think there would be a problem with it, but I just wanted to ask you guys. I mean.
You have the funding or you need funding?
Yeah, no, I have the funding, like, we're not looking to spend like an exorbitant amount of funds for it, just something so that we can, some recruiting for these positions.
I personally don't have a problem with, no, but the rest of it.
I think you done it last year, didn't you?
Yeah.
No, we don't did it.
Most of this stuff has been done out of our own pocket, because we were kind of wasteful, but we couldn't do it. So our district chief that heads up like PR and things like that, she spends a lot of her own.
Recruiting for y'all and the sheriff and everybody else is a problem, and I think we need to help y'all the best we can get those folks on board, so I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. I'm only one, but I'll make a motion to approve it. I'll second that motion.
Moving single in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-six, discuss and take action on the purchase of a used ambulance to mitigate associated issues arising from the prolonged lead times on current ordered ambulances.
So we were here a couple of weeks ago and kind of talked about this, so we worked with purchasing to kind of get together for ambulances.
I'll stop him, can you read that?
I know, I know, I don't know why it's so small, I have the same problem for it. So we worked with purchasing and we found kind of our first choice ambulance that we would like to be able to purchase used, they're holding it for us. And we also reached out to see if they would hold our second one, because we are currently down an ambulance due to the flooding. We had an ambulance severely damaged in a flash flood situation. Our crews are safe, but it's kind of disheartening, so we're down that unit. I don't, I don't know if it's terrible or not, we're working with insurance for that. And then just some of our older reserve units are starting, we're starting to have a lot of problems with them, which we've kind of explained to you guys in the past. So we would like to at least get approved for one, if not two, used ambulances. I printed out the second one that was kind of on the list. It wasn't included with backup, because we didn't think that we really were going to maybe need to ask for a second one, but now it might do.
But there was something in Bill, I did, I guess, it was somewhere in all this, I'm assuming it was in Bill, but an ambulance, maybe?
Of course, I may be commingled with the.
Or something, we have one that in Houston, right, and then.
Maybe that's, I don't know, I should have marked it, whatever, okay.
But a- anyway, I mean, how much money Patricia, out of that five eighty that we set aside is going to take for the employees to get us to the end of the year?
Less than two hundred.
Yeah, so we still have some money set aside in there we could use.
Yeah, I would be, I think it makes good sense to have them here, I'll make a, just a quick motion.
What do we think is insurance going to do on the new one, that flooded?
That might be a Cheryl question.
I'm not quite sure, they haven't gotten back with this yet on, on what they're.
Can we get a chassis and just? Can we get a chassis and just put that box on it? Just have a brand new truck with a chassis?
I think they need to check it out. I'm not, I know the water got pretty high in it, so I don't know. I think the generator might have been affected as well.
But these both chassis will set up where we can buy, or both boxes will set up where we can buy a new chassis.
They're Frasier boxes, so yes, we would be able to remount them on a new.
So we can still buy three chassis and have three new rigs going, boxes.
And you've got.
Make a motion, Bill.
I'm getting ready. You've got how many coming, Rick?
So we have, so uh Chris talked to them Friday, I think, to Frasier and. Theoretically, we should have two ready in December. Um and then the next one. By August at best.
We should be able to buy chassis after that for a while.
Yeah, cause we won't get to the points where we can kind of remount.
Are are the chassis available? It's just hard to get them as.
That's the problem or the unit was this backlog of chassis with the. Now that's all got caught up and now they have this surplus of chassis that they're trying to mount boxes on. And so us and basically everyone else in our region that uses Frasier is just line up to go on the chassis.
Yeah. But all those could be remounted.
That's the biggest thing.
Yeah, yeah, be able to use them.
That's a cheap box.
Yeah, that's cheap.
That's correct.
Twenty-two, we we just got those chassis.
Okay, it's quicker now.
Do we know wake time on a remount?
Not sure.
It's okay, I'm just.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Been a long time.
We actually have a new rep with Frasier, um so we're kind of in the process of getting it bought up and. So we can definitely reach out.
Go ahead, Bill.
And what about stuff to go in these so they can go on the road?
If we were to get these two, we would have the equipment to go in them. Um. The one that'll be here next summer, we need the equipment for that, so I'm building that into.
Alright, so I I would make the motion to approve the purchase of up to two ambulances. At price not to exceed, I'm gonna put a hundred thousand dollars in case other little fees jump up to be paid for by, what's the name of that fund?
The EMS contingency.
EMS contingent.
And each one of them would need to be under fifty thousand, that's correct.
Both of them are, both of these are.
Okay, I mean, uh.
Yeah, but just stay under.
They have to stay under fifty, it cannot go, Cheryl, help me here. Okay, I'm correct, right? Okay.
Cannot go over over fifty or what?
No, cumulative, I mean, it's gonna be. Now it's coming from, are they both coming from this ambulance depot in Houston? Now is that a?
They're both being held.
Are they by board?
We don't want to get in trouble.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think they should be. Um a lot of them are.
Alright, so here, so our, the motion we gave gives Cheryl and y'all the authority to go get. Two ambulances not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars, but you got to do that within the purchasing rules that she puts out.
Okay, suck of that.
Are you good, Quinn?
Quinn?
Quinn, are you good?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
All in favor raise your hand.
Well, I didn't think he was good gonna do it.
Motion carries. Twenty-seven, discuss and take action on courthouse drainage issue, where?
Okay. I said two please.
On alert.
Okay, so um. This bill guy piece right here is one of those cells that we talked about before. Uh it's just outside the judge's office, right upstairs over here. What we did here was we removed all the dirt. This is where it's directly above where the leak occurred downstairs. Um there was nothing to let the water out down there. It was it was just a solid swimming pool. So if we go to the next one. There you go. There we go. So right here, we're looking at the. The concrete wall and the brick in the front. And we carried uh some perforated pipe, wrapped it with uh landscape fabric, filled it up with uh gravel. And we put two weed poles through the brick. And we got pipes carrying water out onto the lawn outside. That is taking care, that is really handling that water in that section great. Uh these last rains, we didn't have anything pooling there, everything flowed out nice. Um on this opposite side over here, we have a mirror image of it. And because the rains were happening like they were, we just simply punched a hole in the wall without digging anything. Drained out nicely. We watched it all through the rains and it looks like it's doing fine. A couple of weeks ago, there was a meeting between uh the judge and Ms. Cheryl. On another subject, but the engineer asked the question, what is our progress up here at the courthouse? Uh it took a long time to get this right here accomplished. Because of the small space and the fact that we can't get any equipment up there to dig, everything had to be hand dug, parted in with wheelbarrows in and out. After a short discussion with the engineer, uh the suggestion was put towards them. What if we just remove some dirt and or slab? The only question that we had in our minds was what about the weight? What what's the, what's the difference on the weight maybe? Or do the engineer, this is not an official statement from them, but according to the engineer, the wet soil would weigh more than a four inch slab. So. A follow-up question was was posed. Um if we tore its slab, would we have to worry about doing this same thing in all these other cells? The answer was no. Of course, we would do everything we could to remove any of the water, especially above the entrance overhand up there. And that's actually going on right now. We've got some pits dug up there and we've got some submersible pumps going. They're actively pulling the water out of it and putting it out onto the lawn as the water level rises back up. Um I was up there looking at it before it came down here and this it's working pretty good over there. So. I asked the local co- uh local. Con- concrete contractor to uh look at it and give me an estimate based on. Only the affected area that we're talking about up there. That area measures out to thirteen foot by sixteen foot. The thirteen feet is. The distance from the inside of the brick wall to the wall of the building. And so we asked them to bid us. We asked them to bid us. Tell us what that would cost. So we asked them to bid removing. Four inches of dirt. Pouring a four inch slab with rebar. Have it fall towards the brick wall. And install a twelve inch wide, four inch deep trench drain at the brick. Have that trench drain either come to an apex in the center of the entrance. Let the water die off into the drains that we already have on each side and we just pipe that extra water down into those drains. Or have it die off and pour off onto this side over here where we have a six inch line underground. It just handles so much more water. Um he also uh. He allowed for uh cleaning the brick up there, sealing the brick before anything's poured. Uh but this was just a basic, simple. Estimate here. He went a little further. And just in case, what if, what if, what if we did that and that didn't do the trick? We didn't cover the whole thing. So he added another number in there which would actually cover the whole thing. The measurements on that is not on this bid, but it actually measures out to about thirteen by a hundred and fifty feet. That would be a four inch slab, the entire length of the building, not the flower bed. But the entire length of the building, if we went all the way up to the edge of the flower beds, we'd be looking at another fifty feet. And we have nothing underneath there other than lawn to worry about. So. What I'm asking for today is I'm asking for approval to uh work with Ms. Cheryl and put this out for bid. To see what kind of numbers come back. And uh hopefully this would be a permanent solution to our water issue over there.
So if you bid it, would you include the end to end, like when the the extra fifty feet, does it like an alternate, like do a base?
I think that's a great idea. When I saw the difference in the cost.
Yeah, I think.
Especially if we would have to come back, we would, it would actually cost more if we had to come back, they'd have to re-mobilize.
Yeah, sex and a bumper truck and everything else.
If the vendor owns a concrete pump truck, then you know. Some don't, they're gonna have to rent them, you know, then we'd be looking at having to pay a little bit extra rental on that as well.
I'm assuming like the drains and stuff, that's all gonna be covered up?
That is buried right now. I took those pictures before we buried it.
So we're gonna pull concrete over that?
Yes.
What happens if something happens to that?
I have clean outs, can we go back to the last, yeah, plans? So I have clean outs up here near the wall and it's just a straight line of pipe. Can we go to the third, third uh? You only got two, okay. On the outside out here, we have a. One inch PVC that's uh in that penetration in the wall. Everything sealed in good there. We've got it sticking out from the wall about two, about twelve inches. Just to keep that water from dripping right down at the brick and give it more chance to fall down the hill. Right here, what we're seeing right here, this line right here is in that, is somebody's idea of a French drain. That was supposed to carry water out, but um. Uh that's really what it is. It's somebody's idea of a French drain. It wasn't carrying anything. It was actually sitting level.
Couple inches down.
It's just a couple inches down under the surface. I mean, you you just barely scrape the dirt back and you find the pipe.
You have those retaining walls where it goes up.
Yeah.
It just sits on top of those.
So basically what we're talking about with the trench string, we would be talking about at the end of the brick here, coming in here twelve inches. Alright, carry the water out.
Alright. And does it go into him, you know?
Sir?
No.
Does it go?
No.
Is that section?
It starts right at that section and it comes over here and dies off over here.
Okay. Alright.
It has been there and unknown to me for as long as it had. When we found it, we found that it was actually full of dirt.
So what's what's the downside to pouring the whole thing? Is there a downside at all to to? Doing your third option of paving end to end, garden, flower garden, a flower bed, is there anything other than just having? Concrete, which is not a big deal for me.
The only, the only thing that I think is, well, of course, we wouldn't be able to plant any vegetation there.
Planters have put a lot.
We have planters up there if we'd like to do that. Um I would like to add the option of a safety rail above. The entrance over here. Just because we would have an open trench drain. We don't wanna put a, we don't wanna put a grate on it. We don't wanna give it any chance to get clogged up and not carry water out. So I would like to add the option of a rail, just a metal rail up there. That could also give us another option when we have to fat hang um.
Banners or whatever.
Burn ban banners and different event banners where we have, where we have to shuffle them around on the third floor. We could actually post something there, a little bit more prominent closer to closer to ground level.
Alright, so your bid would be end to end concrete and a rail.
And rail.
And a walker, that's my motion then, and you're just gonna come back with prices?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Larry, nobody's seen this bid that you've already gotten. Miss Cheryl.
So are y'all interested in any in one or two, I think, I think.
Do the whole thing if you're gonna.
Yeah, Indiana. Yeah, gonna play for a trip. Yeah.
If if that's a fix, then we need to fix it.
Yeah. I'll second your motion.
Oh, well. I'm waking up.
Alright, I'm in favor, raise your hand.
So who does the motion?
Bill did the motion, I seconded it.
Didn't think he needed to second it.
Twenty-eight, receive update on district attorney's office regarding flooding.
We have some photos here, these are photos from Tuesday last week. After that, first have you writing the headline? Um you can just flip through.
That's all about.
Water on the hard surface over there. This appeared on the university avenue wall. Not where we have our normal problem on the other side. Yes, we did have problems on that side over there, but. While Nathan and I were over there cleaning that up. We dry the floor up, pull the baseboard back to let it air out. And we we could watch the water coming through the wall directly back onto us. They're nearly half the day over there with that. After that was dried up, we moved, we moved furniture. So the air could circulate, um steamery came later that day, set up nineteen fans and three dehumidifiers. And they were operating all week last week until the second big rain.
Yeah.
When the second big rain came, um that treated us way worse than that over there. I didn't have time this morning to uh. Attach any new photos of what was happening there. It was worse. And it was even more evident on that where how the water was getting in there. We as a department are going to go in with a clear sealant below. The uh OG rail on the, on the building itself. The OG rail being the solid uh curved rail that runs um five feet or so above ground level. And go over there, uh clean a little bit of soil back and we're gonna seal that, seal that outside with a clear sealant. Trying to prevent any water from, from above ground getting in there, but. This is what we're seeing. We're we're not seeing that our drains, uh it looks like our drain work that we did previously is working over there. This is a basement situation here. I'm not asking for any approvals or anything on that right there. I'm just uh. Just updating you guys. We are working on coming up with a possible solution and I will bring that back later. Um but right now, we're just, we're really trying to get them dried out. And get them back into operation over there. We didn't have any insulation. All of these walls are just sheet rock walls with uh cement behind them. No insulation needed to worry about, so there's very, very little chance of any growth back there. Um but on this side over here on the university avenue side. This has not happened in at any, in any form since Hurricane Harvey. Except for these last recent.
Always amazed me, they dig a hole and stick a building in it and I respect to have trolls. I might have to talk to my engineer about that.
Somewhere down the road, you're gonna have trouble. Any more questions?
So are we bringing, are we bringing somebody in for a, like a long-term fixed? I know we you've looked at it.
Yeah, like an entrance claim.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, this is, this has been. I have, I have about a hundred more photos that we took last week to give you documentation. I'm gonna get with Ms. Ally this afternoon and make sure all the information got across to her.
Okay.
Anything else? Alright, twenty-nine, discuss and take action on applying with city of Huntsville for new sewer tap at thirteen thirteen university avenue.
I don't have any photos of this. Mr. Dogghead is very familiar with what's, what's uh what's going on over there. So we have a sewer line that it exits our building. And I had been, in years past, we had been told that we had caught into a city main. And there's a T in our, in our intersection. Uh we found out recently that that's not the case. Our sewer runs directly out of the building, makes a short uh sweep of a ninety. And heads straight down to the manhole at fourteenth street. And as far as I can tell, we're the only customer on that line. Uh it's a very old line, sections over to clay, sections over to cast iron, sections over to PVC. Um our small camera, we can't camera it, the whole thing. But there's, there's elevation changes in it. It's it's an old line and that's to be expected. But there's really no real deline- real line where our line ends and where their line begin. And that line occurs in the city right away. So what I'm asking for today is I'm asking for uh approval to go ahead and apply to the city for a new sewer tap. That should open up a discussion with them. Where are we gonna tap it? How are we gonna tap it in? So um I'm hoping that the whole situation will evolve and improve from there, but this has been an ongoing issue for years over there. With that line. Um we do what we can as a department when we have a problem to get it cleared out. But with the problems that we know are in that line that are not on our property, and I'm not talking about on, not on our property in the right of way, which is. Directly in front of the building, further down the line, there are, there are other issues down there as well. It's been talked about to have it sleeved, it's been talked about to have it replaced, but it's just been, you know, just been ideas that are floating around.
Yeah, sooner or later it's gonna mess the building.
Yes, some, some cities in Texas recognize ownership of the sewer line, the private sewer line. From the customer, like in our case, Andy's office, all the way to the super main. Other cities. Say, no, this, the city owns the sewer line up to the property line. City of Huntsville recognizes customer, and actually I researched several other big cities. And seems like more of them say the customer owns it all the way to the main. But led us to the water, the sewer tap um recommendation was in the actual city. Um in their code of ordinance, is the only one allowed to work on and make a tap in a city sewer. The city right away is a city employee or a contractor. The city right of way is a city employee or a contractor hired by the city. And they have a flat rate for sewer tap and, um, the tree out in front of Andy's office is in the city right of way, so we can't dig it up. So we're, like Larry said, we'll apply for a sewer tap. And, um, if nothing else, we get a discussion going as to how they want it. So that's my recommendation is to approve agenda number twenty-nine.
Second. Move and sing it all, favor raise your hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thirty, discuss and take action approval order twenty twenty-four dash six two to amend the budget for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Allen?
For you, uh, that's another. Uh, the first one is to take money out of the general hospitancy of hundred twenty thousand five sixty-three. Uh, thirty-five thousand five sixty-three to go to, uh, uh, District Attorney's Budget for the, uh, with contract, central cost fifty-five thousand, uh, for autopsies and ambulance services. Uh, and then engineering thirty thousand to go to the engineering budget.
The ambulance services, Patricia, is that like, uh? What is that?
Oh, that is, um, basically transfers that are ordered by the, the J P.
Okay.
And then our central courts, uh, we received revenues from the state, so receiving those revenues uh, for capital murder trials and then putting those in the operations budget and then transferring a hundred and twenty thousand out of the central funds that are budgeted for, uh, appointed attorneys and moving that money to each of the three courts. Uh, see the money coming into the central district attorney budget. Adult probation, uh, Kristen is asking for use of thirteen thousand five sixty-two of the statutory, uh, designated revenues that she receives to purchase, uh, computers and rentals. Thirty thousand going into the planning budget, Roden Bridge General, uh, recording the grant that was received. Roden Bridge Precinct Two, recording revenues that were received, Roden Bridge Precinct Three, the, uh, same thing. EMS showing, uh, insurance money that we've received, twenty thousand six four. Uh, showing a hundred and thirty-eight thousand four oh five coming out of that special contingency fund. And that's the estimated cost for the, uh, employ, uh, employees that are being, uh, advertised for now. Then the insurance money going into the budget, uh, juvenile grant, recording a grant that we've received. And then the last page is the ARP budget. All money, uh, has been invoiced to us with the exception of the ambulances that are still on order. So we're, we're at the end of the expenditure of that money. Uh, and this is literally, uh, the money that was actually spent on each of those items down to the sense, so that's how we have to file it with the ARP. So this is, uh, the final basically accounts budget today.
Like the motion to approve agenda number thirty to approve order twenty twenty-four dash sixty-two.
I'll second that.
Move and sing it all in favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-one, discuss and approve final payment reporting for Tri County contract to be paid from ARP funds.
Received the final invoice from Tri County, uh, and they have included the, uh, required narrative reading works then were called for.
Make the motion to approve agenda thirty-one.
Move and sing it all in favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Allen. Thirty-two, discuss and take action to send a request for a higher reimbursement rate under section D of rider forty-two to UTMB.
Basically defined rider forty-two.
I'm glad I wasn't the only one. I said, I'm glad I wasn't the only one.
Well, I put this on court and y'all know that last court. And I had Richard Don on board and Richard Don, this could have been asked of him without having to go through the senator's office, you know, but anytime you use a senator, to me, you're kinda trying to bully is what I look at it as, unless it's something that you know no other route to go. So I totally disagree that y'all went through the senator's office and you could have asked him this on the last court. He's the guy you're going back to anyway. Richard's the go-to guy when it comes to all this and he was up there and, and prior to that, a- a- and my point prior to that on the other court about representing the court and I want y'all to read the two emails. And, and the perception that I get out of these two emails is that it's already voted out. Which means it appears when you have two people involved, is that two of them, Bill?
Yes.
I, I don't have much problem if one person does it, but when you got two people off this court, the perception is that you're representing the court. And I just totally disagree unless you're telling them that you're not representing the court. She read that first email, that perception would say that we've already voted on this today.
Please see email below. You may read this one?
Read them both if you want to. That's, that's what the two emails, I mean, if you read them both and the perception is there evidently. You know, so my point is if, if one person is doing something, I really don't have much of an issue with it. If two people's involved off the court, then you need to tell them you're not representing commissioner's court. You need to make that statement.
For the record commissioner, I recommend that all five of you, anytime you're in communication with any vendor or any on county business that you make it clear, you are one of five and it will take a majority vote.
I always say that. I personally do. I don't know what the rest of them do, but that's what I do. But I, I don't want that perception from our court, like, like where, when you have two, two is definitely a perception that it's commissioner's court, in my opinion. So anyway, I, I don't say what I'm gonna say, but that's just kinda where I'm at. And, and I'm not against moving forward, but we could have done this. If you'd asked the question of Richard last court, we could have moved through him and not gone through the senator's office.
We had a workshop to discuss how to get more money, but above one hundred percent of Medicare. We did do a uh, motion to approve to charge two hundred or whatever our emergicon rate was.
How come we didn't ask the question of the, Richard instead of going through the senator's model? You know, I mean, why you gotta go through the senator when you could have asked him directly?
Why didn't Richard tell us about Senate Bill forty-two, section D?
There was, there was a comment in there.
He told us that he can charge one hundred percent because of rider fund forty-two. We were having a conversation with him of how to get more money from him.
Oh, yeah, there's, ask him, you ask the senator.
I, we.
He said there was a way to do it. I remember that.
I was aware of it, uh, but I don't expect any more than anybody else. That's just the way I was raised. If we're getting paid the same thing of, as the rest of the people that have TDC units, I'm fine with that, unless we all change it. We don't deserve no more than everybody else.
Back to Bill's question, what, I couldn't find anything on rider forty-two, section.
I would like, uh, I got, I, yeah, actually I had.
It's probably in what code?
I would like, I don't know, was it in?
It's in the contract, no.
You read this thing? I know it's available. I know it's available. I was aware of it last court, you know, but.
Is that the one that talks about dispatching from a hospital? Is that what that one is?
No, he told us that hospitals, any EMS service that runs other than the county owned cannot charge more.
Was I heard something? What?
No, Richard's not on the.
Okay.
Reading some of the questions I got in this contract, it, it seems like it had to be pre-approved in the budget. Before you can even, I, I mean, it's got a process, it's got.
Yeah, that's a process.
Community hospital contract provider. I'm assuming that's where we fall. It says no contract, no great, it says you can charge no greater than a hundred percent Medicare unless prior approved by the LBB.
Right, that's what we're asking for a letter to send to.
Okay, but do they have to do it in the next biannual budget?
We can ask for it. I, I don't know what that says, Danny, but now Richard says.
Well, it says unless prior. I mean, that means, I mean, they've already set their budget.
Yeah.
So, I mean, are you still looking at the next biannual budget because it's gotta go through the legislature or what?
Well, probably, we just gotta start the process.
And I'm, I'm fine with moving forward if y'all.
It's not an easy process to do.
You know, if you're willing to ask, I mean, I'm willing to ask too. I don't have a problem.
I'm willing to ask for some money to help our EMS services. Considering we're gonna send my bill for two hundred and thirty-six percent more anyways, and then we're gonna come back to court and deny it. That ride it off.
We're not sending two hundred and thirty-six percent.
We ought, we voted to send everybody the same billable amount to Emergicon.
Yeah, yeah, we did, we did.
Come back.
Right, but we told them to send our standard rates.
Right.
And I, I don't know if that's two hundred and thirty-sixth or not.
Uh, whatever the back was last month.
Yeah, so whatever. Rachel has something to say.
We bill everybody. Matter, they all get billed the thing from Emergicon. What happens during that process when they're billing it out? Those entities are gonna pay what they're gonna pay. So if it's a Medicare patient, we're gonna get paid what the Medicare rate is. If it's UTMB and like they said last time, they pay Medicare rate, that's it. They're gonna come back to Emergicon and say, we're UTMB, we're only gonna pay you this much and they're gonna adjust the bill. Like, that's how the billing.
Yeah.
Works.
Yeah, that's what we do.
Send the, the fee out, like their, every transport we do is billed the thing.
Right.
You're billing a hundred percent.
Yes.
Last meeting.
I was gonna say, our last meeting was to, was more to work on the emergicon process than her invoice in the back.
Yeah, they were not billing at the same rate.
Yeah. Yeah, so we fixed that.
They had that super old thing on the title, but.
Okay.
So right now, they, everybody did.
Okay, and I know you wasn't there and I bring this up every time, it costs you five hundred and three dollars to ride a mile and a half. So I know you come out on that. You know?
You didn't have to walk though.
No.
So, so I still, I'm still hung up on this rider forty-two bill.
Yeah.
I don't, I have no clue what that is.
Can we, I mean, I, I, I have no troubles going forward, but I'd like to see what the language.
I, I'm not going forward until I understand the rider forty-two.
I'm good. I'll wait with you.
I mean, unless Quentin can give us some insight on it.
I'm not saying rider forty-two.
I mean, I, I'm not against moving forward with it by no means, but I need to know what
Yeah.
that is, because it just mentions it in the contract. It does give no explanation at all. And when you look it up on the internet, it.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't have time to do all that last night.
I looked up, there's like eight hundred different things in there, so.
I mean, I know it's there, cause I mean, let's say I've talked to, uh, the UTMB guy and he, and it is available, that option is available to move forward with it, but that's just him telling me that. So I mean, we can get him back on, we can get him back on zone for next quarter.
He said in, in the, in the workshop of the day that there was a way to move forward with it, you know, if it does or not, you know, that, that like I said, the.
Yeah, well, we don't have to do anything, I don't think, today, other, what, I think one thing I'd like to do just to kinda clear up a conversation is, I don't know if it requires action or not, but, um, if we make a motion to, uh, ask the county judge to be, to pursue higher reimbursement rate, um, for UTMB, then, then he can become kind of a voice of the county and that kind of. And then, but as a comment of that, not part of the motion, but get us this rider forty-two stuff so we can read it.
We can make a committee on it.
Well, yeah, you can appoint a committee, that's your responsibility.
I just want two people. I'm gonna work with Ronnie, since he's involved with it, we'll be done with it. We can all sit down with Don and maybe work. Swatner, and we too can work it out and.
Okay.
That work, go on.
So no motion from me then, you can just.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna turn it to a committee to me and Ronnie White.
Of course.
I worked.
I do that.
Perfect. Thirty-three, discuss and take action on appointing an external audit review committee. That committee's up. I'm gonna appoint Ms. Allen, Amy Kowinski, uh, Diane McCray, Leslie Woolley, and Carrie French. That's in the form of a motion.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. One point per second. Motion passes. Thirty-four, discuss and take action on proposal to repair roads damaged during home construction in Texas Grand Ranch by accepting donations from Property Owners Association or the individual, individual property owner and hiring outside contractors to perform their repairs.
We have so much construction going on in Grand Ranch and we do not have the manpower to keep up with the damage that the contractors doing, and I visited with, uh, the Property Owners Association a little bit, and they do hold a fee to repair the roads with, with the contractors there. So I'm gonna work with them on getting donations when we do the fix on the problems that the contractors work or actually tear up. And so, you know, I got one in particular right now. It's, I think it's in backup. I'm not sure. What are we looking at, thirty-four?
I'm looking at the one, looking at the one.
Yeah, I'm gonna front the money, but then we'll get a donation back from them. And, and this flat do not have time to actually do what they're, you know, you got what, four hundred homes out there, five hundred homes, and it's growing? I see two or three driveways a week. I can't keep up with those contractors. There's no possible way. So my motion is gonna be to approve allowing me to take donations from whoever the, or Property Owners Association or the landowner and allow a contractor to fix the damage.
All right, I'll second that. That sound good, Clinton?
Yes, I do wanna clarify that the roads that are being repaired, the county accepted, county maintained
Yes.
by a private contractor can't just go out there and work on it, public road. And the second part of this proposal after receiving the donation is that commissioner's office will either do the work himself or he will contract out to get the work done if he doesn't have the time, as he pointed out. Why? That will have to follow whatever the purchasing requirements are to.
Yes, yes.
Uh, motion and second, all in favor? Motion carries. Thirty-five, discuss, take action on purchase of a new sign machine, vinyl express Q forty-two, gen three and software from Sign Warehouse for Roden Bridge General to be housed at Roden Bridge Four.
It's end of life, beyond end of life mainly because of we make some adjustments to the ones we got and we don't it be made because it's too long, the software drills. My motion is to approve purchase, sign machines, vinyl express, the software included, Sign Warehouse.
I'll second that.
Take it out of, uh.
Right. Move and sing it all in favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-six, discuss and take action on right. Discuss and take action on right-of-way easement for Greg, Greg Wilmeth on Jones Road and Gregory Lane.
All right, so we got, uh, uh, county road that we've got, uh.
This is the one you had last time, Brandon?
This is the one we passed on, Mr. Lightyear, if you're gonna, if you're gonna have something to say.
First off, uh.
Maybe you'll state your name for Ms. French, please.
Everything going on last week, uh, with floods. We just not quite enough time to get everything together. Um, and I don't have anything that I could, it's due by Wednesday this week as far as backups. Y'all don't have any of, any of the information I'm about to, to y'all. Y'all wanted to wait another two weeks, I'd be more than happy to do that. If not, I'm about ninety percent have my information, so go for it. Tell me what you'd like.
So you, Brandon, it's up to you. Your call.
I'm not passing on today. We're gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask court to approve this today.
Refresh our memory what we're talking about. Refresh my memory what we talking about.
So, so got any anything, Ruth?
Thank you.
How's Ben? Can't remember to say your last name. Daily, documentation, we maintained it for over twenty years.
Okay.
Um, so they have a existing right-of-way that was, uh, basically in the same spot as the county road. Uh, right-of-way to all these tracts is the last track there.
Just wanna make sure we're on, on the same page. The area in blue, they didn't print out, uh, too well, so I apologize about that, but these are the, uh, this is Gregory Lane that we're, that we're talking about. Um, I'm in section one five one three eight. Uh, the other section sits down below me, uh, they're owned by Mr. Stefan Reed, my neighbor. Um, and another Gregory is one five one four five and another Gregory is one five one four six. So eighty percent of the road of the property is still owned by the Gregors. So I just wanna make sure y'all see that, uh, next page over, um, is a, uh, you will see a copy of my survey. Um, right there in the, you will see that my property, and this is, I'm using my, my survey to give you an example. You will notice that it goes, uh, it's the same for all of the other ten sections of the plan. Property line goes above Gregory Lane. Everybody on the road has this easement, uh, that was established back in nineteen seventy. So, uh, you turn the page, see a copy of that, uh, that D. And what gives us to write? Everybody has.
Brandon, is this where John and him live down there? Where John and him live? Uh, and John Gregory?
This is a different bunch of Gregors.
Different bunch, uh.
Now, they probably were.
Back then.
Back then.
So, and right now, on that road, just let y'all know, there's only one family that lives there, and that's me. Nobody else lives there, so.
And therein lies the problem, for people across the road who want to sell to buy this property, and, and they're trying to give us the right-of-way so that it's all, all taken care of, and, and he does not want anybody living next to him. That's the biggest deal.
No, 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 Brandon, let's get on the record real quick, and I know you've got an issue with me, but this is a property right thing. And it's not about having people next to me, it's about stepping over and taking property that you do not lawfully own. That's my problem. Uh, same way with Mrs. Reed, she, she has the exact same, uh, feeling as well. I don't think, because you're getting proposed tactically. County has, uh, the landowner wants to sell it, because he's losing money, he has a big interest in it. We're gonna lose potential value on our land, all right? So yes, I have, do have a concern about that as well. But if you will look, big thing how this came down, it's chapter two thirty-eight, that was issued back in two thousand and three. And, uh, that pretty much gave the county, uh, uh, the ability to go ahead and list, um, roads within this county. Nobody contested it, they had the opportunity to grab that as county maintenance. So, if you look, uh, I'll highlight the chapter two thirty-one, I'll go back to that in a second. But basically, uh, item two says, as a result of having continuously maintained the road with public funds in between nineteen eighty-one. According to what you've sent to me, earliest y'all, uh, uh, maintain Gregory Lane's doubt.
As early as we have, uh, uh, records of it, um, what's hot, continue. I got, can get, or you should sign out the names, and they maintained it for.
The county roadmap statute is, uh, beyond standing limitations. No litigation, no challenges are admissible for any longer than your back. So.
That was two thousand and eight?
Yeah.
Two thousand and eight, yes, and it is, it is, it is no longer a cause of action, the rule that the county would be that landowner could use for in, for making, for first condemnation, would be that the county has not in fact maintained road for at least. So, the nineteen eighty-one date is no longer relevant in this case.
Item on here as well, we consider is that, what agreement did the county have to maintain those different sections of road? Technically, that's trespassing. To trespass to take care of a road, and that's not, that, I don't believe that would be an accurate, uh, way to claim maintenance. So unless you had an agreement with every single landowner, well, not section of land, I don't think you can claim that as being continued maintenance.
Um, I will respectfully disagree with the interpretative.
When did you move in?
You're two thousand seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yeah. Um, the other item in, in question on here is, uh, so the roads, I have a copy of all the roads. Y'all had six hundred and eleven roads that were, uh, inputted. I know this is the statute of the patients, it's obviously off, but one of the things I noticed in the minutes from October fourth, two thousand and eight, uh, commissioner asked, do you think about if there are any private roads on the map? Isabel stated, yes, he put some on for points, for points of reference only. So when did those private roads come off, and how, how does that impact, or did they come off, or did those roads get acclimated under, to, 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 and never get pulled back off?
Well, let's hold your thought there, I'm thinking, we, we put them on, so we know which ones are private, so we stay.
They were marked.
Off of them, right? We, we, we inventoried every road, but we designated it as private, so that we would not go on to those roads as private roads. So, but we had to basically inventory all of them.
And it all, it falls back to the nine one one address, you know?
Right.
And then last question I have is, what constitutes a county road? What do you text, uh, reasons they have on there are either a gate on the road or signs. Gregory Lane has had signs, if you'll turn the page, you can see that there are signs that have been outlining that road, it has private, trespassing, get out, everything else. Uh, one of the things that I did, you'll notice on the second page photographs, I was looking at some of the survey marks on Mr. Reynolds' property, and, uh, noticed that back, back, back behind some road, were some old signs that were back there, and so I don't know how long they've been there. Uh, but you'll see that, that's what's, that's what it, so, that's what I put back there. The other item on here, this is what we're claiming, and this goes to section two eighty-one. Basically states that it's found may apply to public interest in a, in a private road only by purchase, combination, or patient, or force. That first position.
I do want to point out, this is chapter two eighty-one, this is not by law, they've got me, there's a population bracket on it.
And then, problem is, is that we still have deeds, we have that deed stating that it's still an easement. Till that deed goes away, then.
I, I, I'm sorry. My interpretation of that is the purchase of a property with that deed is subject to any re-existing easement, right away that basic property law. And so, the property was purchased with the road. Was purchased.
Well, that's one of the things I have not had, uh, was not going to allow, is I have a call with my title attorney.
Sure.
Uh, right, and they have not been able to, to look into this, so that is, that is a question I have, so.
Brandon, you're, you're, uh, taking right-of-way on the other side, right?
So, Brandon, it's the, the twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, twenty-five? All the way down?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Was you doing anymore past that point, or is that what I was gonna get?
No, so this, this property connects to Jones Road as well, that's why I think this one has, uh, Jones Road, uh, and uh, Gregory Lane on it, this little piece property, we give the property for this, we're gonna get it.
Okay.
But I guess, at the end of the day, in two thousand and eight, prior to that, county sent notifications to every registered property owner, saying that we are creating a road name list. And, uh, you had until a certain date, if you were contesting that road as being public or private, to approach the court, to make a claim. Hearing none, that road was, was considered public before, was adopted as a county road. The two thousand and eight act, correct my date if wrong, expired in two thousand and eighteen, it was ten years in two thousand and eight, or something like that?
A little bit off on that, Commissioner, actually, the act was, um, put a two-year special limitations after the adoption of the county roadmap, and what the county roadmap actually did was create a presumption of a public road.
Yeah.
And it allowed for a two-year period of time, which, based on legal opinion, it can't be from outside counsel, was extended actually to two thousand and thirteen. So there was an extended period of time to challenge that, but it created a presumption. And if the presumption were challenged in court, and the county has in fact faced some of those lawsuits, then the county would have to provide proof that maintenance began on or before September one of nineteen eighty-one. The, the fact is that a road, just putting it on the map, didn't make it a public road, it was, it created a presumption of it. And so, the commissioner's court went through that process, that notification, once they adopted the map, second notification was sent, there was a delay in sending it, which is the result of why they didn't set it off in two thousand and ten, they let it go to two thousand and thirteen, which, not sure statutorily they were allowed to do, but that benefits the landowners, so I, I don't oppose it. The, um, the the statute itself, though, is done in terms of that, the fact that the road was included on it was simply a matter of the commissioner at the time saying, I believe this is a county maintained.
So, but Brandon, you're mowing it, blading it, that kinda stuff every year.
That's right. And it's a one, it's one, it doesn't get, get a lot of maintenance, but it does have maintenance on it. You got one of those years of maintenance records on it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but you're gonna send those as well, when I request them.
Sorry.
When I requested the maintenance record, I thought you were gonna send me all of them.
You asked for the maintenance record on Gregory Lane, that's what I sent you.
That's only to two thousand.
That's all we have access to. Yeah, so when I started, pre, two, two commissioners ago, started in two thousand, keeping up with the spreadsheet, and keeping up with that.
Hey, so you don't have anything before two thousand?
Oh, they're not.
Okay.
So basically, Quentin, that roadmap kinda
sort of alleviated that, right?
Well, you, no, I've said since I arrived a number of years ago, keep records, you need to keep the records. That was one of the reasons that the legislature actually created that chapter, was because many small rural counties didn't have good records, and this was designed to kind of be a clean state, play type thing starting over. I will say for the benefit of court here, in some of the lawsuits under the county roadmap statute, uh, those lawsuits were actually filed in precincts for, and I was able to obtain from them for the litigation purposes, the written documents similar to ways. But I was also able to obtain sworn affidavits from individuals who were employed by Roden Bridge Four, or who presided on the roads in question, and they were able to testify to the maintenance maintained by the county that pushed us back. I know in one case, we went back into the seventies, and so we were able to reach that nineteen eighty-one mark by records not maintained by the road and bridge, but through statements, people who actually did the work, or who lived on the streets and observed the work being done, you know?
So, you ready to make your, you ready to do it today?
Anything else?
I just, I mean, it is flawed right now, I don't know how you're legally gonna access.
Well, I think when I told you last time in board that you need to get your lawyer now.
If you have a deed that says you can't access to, to be otherwise, you don't have access.
Well, I, I, I disagree there, because it's by, by prescribed easement.
It's what?
It's by prescribed easement, maintained for twenty years, everybody owns a piece of road, we own very few roads. You know, and somebody owns either the middle of the road, all the way across the road, or vice versa. And you still pay taxes on it. I mean, that's, you're not in the boat by yourself, it's, everybody else is involved with, and count me, and.
Yeah, me too.
And, and everybody else, so, um.
I just gave Ronnie a bunch a couple of months ago.
Yeah, still paying taxes.
Still paying it.
You still pay taxes on it.
So, uh, I, I would suggest if you want to move forward, then do it like Mr. Decker said, and, and get your lawyer to contact the DA's office.
Yeah.
We'll do. All right. My motion is gonna be to approve the right-of-way easement for Greg Wilmeth, Jones and Gregory Lane.
I'll second that.
Move and sing it all, favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-seven, discuss and take action on right-of-way acquisition report for Greg Wilmeth on Jones Road and Gregory Lane.
Move for approval.
I'll second it.
Move and sing it all, favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Number thirty-eight, discuss and take action on Michael and Betty Craig Grant's request on onsite sewer facility regulations for Walker County for permit act, application number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero one two zero. Thirty-eight.
Got lost.
I can't see that print.
The, the request on this application is that, um, they're installing a onsite wastewater system. They're installing it, uh, for function with a pre-firm structure, and their request is to install the electrical and mechanical components, um, at the, at the floor level of the existing structure. Um, we don't have any opposition to this, uh, without this variance, they would have to establish solely for the purpose of installing the wastewater.
Okay. I make the motion to approve agenda thirty-eight, present.
Move and sing it all, favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-nine, discuss and take action on Rayford E. Johnson's request for variance to section B four point one and section four point one eight of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding required right-of-ways for plat number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero two eight. Rayford E. Johnson, sixteen point six eight one acre tract, called Johnson's Daughter Estates.
Good morning, Matt Tucker, Texas Professional Surveying, uh, you know, these are also present here, just in case. This is, uh, simply just a situation where, in this area, we, uh, researched, uh, all the way back up to Maine, and, and can't find any solid evidence of the need more than sixty foot of, uh, right-of-way there, with pavement, uh, meters. From, from this point, all the way a couple of feet, uh, okay, you know, be, uh, in this case, it's really not necessary, once you get down to this point. Maintenance, this area has been, uh, ongoing and, and for decades, uh.
Yeah, the property stakes are what, thirty-two, seven, or something like that, thirty-six, is that right, Ms. Johnson? Yeah, I, I don't really have an issue with, because I mean, the, the new regulations is what, thirty-five?
Thirty-five, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, so to be clear, so I don't think that the, that the applicant is claiming that their property doesn't abut the existing product.
No.
But, uh, their property line is, but as you see in the.
Yeah, I went out to look at the stakes, and the stakes are set back pretty far.
They're between thirty-two and thirty-two and a half feet.
Yeah.
So, under our current code, we require thirty-five foot. So there's a two to two and a half foot additional strip of right-of-way that would have to be dedicated by plat, unless they receive a variance.
Yeah, I, I say just leave it like it is, because the rest of the road's already like that, too, so.
Then, from motion.
That's my motion. Don't sound good, does it?
I'll be afraid, but not believe it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second, move and sing it all, favor.
What now?
Present, non-voting. Fast. Forty, discuss and take action on plat number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero two eight. Rayford E. Johnson, sixteen point six eight one acre tract, called Johnson's Daughter Estates, Williams Roark Survey A forty-one.
What you got on that, Andy, anything?
Uh, this is the plat I'm saying.
All right, you don't, uh, you don't need anything contentious or anything. And make a motion to approve agenda of forty, as presented.
I'll second it.
You still, you're good? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Forty-one, discuss and take action on Atlas Land Partners LLC request for variance approval to substitute HDPE and for RCP in the construction plans for subdivision improvements related to proposed culverts at the pond outflows for plat number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero four one, Governor's Ranch subdivision.
Thank y'all.
Anybody here?
I read all the stuff that Bob put in there.
Engineer from the.
Will you state your name for Ms. French?
Yes, sir, this is David Parkinson. At, uh, Atlas Land Partners.
Stephanie, are you available online?
So, the branch request for that was for the, um, request to substitute HDP for RCP. Um, you also have our response from, our response to comment from, uh, Stephanie, it's online, questions about, about their response.
Her, her objection was the recycled material, right?
Uh, yeah, well.
Different item?
That's a different item, but. This, this specific variance is requested to use HDP in lieu of RCP, the range you're referring to is coming up. Stephanie, do you have anything to add, or?
Um, I'm sorry. I didn't hear exactly what you said, Andrew, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, I was, we're, we're on the first, we're on the variance related to the RCP, HDP, um, in your, in your response to the court, in, uh, your opinion, that it doesn't necessarily need a variant. The plans would need to be updated.
Right.
So, the, um, HDP in lieu of RCP and calculation.
Correct, um, what I would recommend is that the updated plans and the updated drainage report be submitted for review, so that we could see those calculations signed and sealed by an engineer.
So, David, we talked about this, I mean, where's y'all's stance on it, man? Y'all still asking for the variance, huh? Uh, the, uh, comments from county engineer representative are completely, make.
Uh, the, uh, comments from county engineer representative are complete, make perfect sense. It's a timing issue. Um, the, uh, hydraulics of the, you know, of the, the issue, that we, our contentions of hydraulics of the pipe is the same.
Yes.
Um, understand updated work, I guess. Vision rather than, uh, a full revision to the drainage.
Well, I mean, I, I looked at the plans, it did give, I mean, it said you could use HDP, but like you said, it, uh, it was as a, what do you want to call it? A secondary, I guess, an alternate?
Alternate.
You know, but
Wasn't specified for the pond outfall.
Yeah.
Stephanie, if you would, just, um, explain maybe a little addition, what your concerns are related to calculations for the HDP person.
Yes, so the drainage report specifically required RCP for the pond outfalls. Um, and, and so due to that, um, and they also used a Mannings coefficient of point oh one three, which is a you can use a lower coefficient for HDP, it's a little bit smoother, and so I just want to see the, um, you know, the design engineer's opinion or another engineer's opinion on that Manning's coefficient is, if there's any impact to the release from the pond, because these are restrictor pipes, they're not specifically culverts under the road, they're, they're also restricting the flow coming from those ponds. And so there is engineering judgment on what Manning's coefficient you can use for those outfall pipes, and I'd just like to see it in a in a signed and sealed, um, revised report.
So you want to use HDP at the pond outfall too? Is that what you're saying or?
Yeah, there's, there's a condition is, uh, where primarily it's one, but there's secondary where the pond is offline of the regular. So the roadway acts of the game on one. Pipes from, that means right, they are detention, it's a detention pond. So technically those pipes have a criteria that goes above just it needs to hold it back to a level to, uh, 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 to a time to keep the detention properly functioning. So we don't disagree with any of that. The, the Mannings is, range is the same. That's the, the request from the contractor and owner is to consider that and allow the HDP in lieu of without a full-blown six-week, including time period.
So is our objection, so the Mannings on the HDP is going to be a lot lower than the Mannings on the concrete, you're saying this is the same?
There's a, it, Manning's for an HDP is a sim, is a range, concrete RCP is acknowledged pretty much point oh one, one three.
So
Because they're both smooth lines.
So what number do we think? I mean, I, if, if, if there's a, if there's a legitimate concern, then, then we should make them do it, but if, if it's accepted that HTPC, HDP is the same Mannings or close to it as concrete. I mean, it's your, your world, Danny, what do you, what do you?
Well, I mean, you know, the it's been a couple of little things, you know, I mean, we, we were using the detention ponds, yeah, in the beginning, come back for a variance to use the detention ponds to run the, the water, if I remember right, uh, under the roads and, and building, using them as the, the road to hold back, I guess, or you remember any of this, Andy? I know I'm not explaining it right, but
Yeah, so, so, I mean, Stephanie, it's your, your time, but right now, I'm, 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 Bill's question. I don't think that there's an objection by, by staff, by review to the, to the use of HDP. Uh, the, the question is, when they build that into plans, what's being discussed is essentially putting a, if I understand properly, correct me if I'm wrong, is essentially putting a, not, go ahead and accomplishing the construction with the HDP now, not revising any calculations. So again, those calculations were done by, by a P, who was running the hydraulics on it, uh, called specifically for RCP and calculations. Their engineering judgment was these pipes precise properly for the material that they had specified under the conditions that they had specified. The, we don't have an objection to the material of HDP being used, it's, it's in our policy, which is why I think Stephanie begins by saying it was not necessarily a variance required.
Right.
Her position is that if they accomplish this construction, complete it, put the road across it and then run calculations at some future date so that they can create the ASBIL and those come, somebody has an objection, then there's a lot of risk involved from the developer. And we don't want to be on the back end of that risk where we said, yeah, go ahead and then later on, no, that's not going to work. So it makes sense?
I mean, what size is the H, u- usually the outfall pipe is what, well, eighteen inches?
Oh, no.
For an eight, no, it's bigger than that one?
Okay.
That's, that's a nice size outfall.
Stephanie, I don't want to speak for you. Did I misstate any of that?
You are correct in what you said.
Well, so David, are you going to be the one certifying the changes? Or is the other engineer?
As an ASBIL, I would be certifying use of the HCP as the ASBIL, but if for it, we have to re redo the stormwater review and, uh, uh, assessment, uh, it would be the original.
Put the, did you put the developer at risk? I mean, could you say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna tell you that we want this, you're gonna, you know, if you want to put it in, you say it's gonna work. You're still going to direct your engineer to go back and rework the numbers, and if they don't come, if they don't work out, then you proceed it at your own peril and now you're going to go figure.
Right. That's right. And if I were to do the drainage assessment, I would go in and I would say end value is the exact same, but it's HCP, so RCP rerun it, the numbers come back the same, so. But, uh, but I'm not the original
Yeah, yeah.
Stormwater assessment, does engineer system.
What do you think, Stephanie? I mean, I've got your recommendations here.
Um. I, I would not recommend, um, approving a plan change without the original engineer or another engineer making those modifications first.
All right, David, if you had caught me before all this rang, I would probably I might have slid weak, but, uh, uh, hey, but I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
I'll second.
Moving, saying to the on favor, raise your hand.
Is Stephanie, it would, we would end up having to come back to court eventually, but I know time is of the essence for them and their work. If the, uh, if, if, if the court approved a contingent of all that, that being submitted.
Yeah.
Um, it may take some of the edge off, but ultimately it's going to come back towards a plan change. That's, I think, Stephanie's point is
Yeah.
You can make a change to the plans themselves, it's maybe on some of the very minor in the field that the, that the developers engineer. Those are going to typically have to come back to court as plan changes, any, any significant changes, because the court approved the original plans. Um, Stephanie, do you think that that would be, or David, do y'all, either one think any sort of contingent approval would be helpful in any way or not?
It would be helpful.
I don't know how much it's actually going to help with the time.
Either way, we're coming back with a set of plans for completed projects, say here it is, and it will, and certainly there will be another change in ASBIL condition.
I think, uh, at the end of the day, Stephanie, we don't have an objection to the HDP as long as it meets calculations, i- i- the calculations work, is that right?
Correct, yes, and, and the, it's designed by an engineer and that the calculations work, so I, I don't, there's not a high risk of this modification having negative impact on the design. Um, I think that it's a relatively low, low risk, but if you have a design change, it should be done by an engineer, signed and sealed, not separate from that or, or that, that revisions should not be delayed.
Maybe the best is
All right, all in favor of the motion? Raise your hand. That's still denied. Motion fails, or motion passes, the variance fails. Forty-two, discuss and take action on Atlas Land Partners LLC request for variance to section B twelve point twelve of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding storm sewer HDP E culverts for plat number twenty twenty-two dash zero four one.
So the request is to substitute, um, our, um, our current standards, uh, that's people who are in, you know, the pipe, which is a virgin resin material. Um, they're, so in front of ASTM standard five that uses a recycling, uh, resin material. Um, Stephanie, you want to go to more detailed, uh, information on that?
Yes, sir, so, um, the, the current regulation requires a hundred percent virgin resins for the HDP E pipe. Um, that is something that, uh, so Tech Todd has a new specification coming out this year, that's their requirement. Most public agencies or public roadways require, um, the hundred percent virgin resin, at least in this area, they require that. Um, yeah, there wasn't evidence supporting the use of a recycled material pipe, um, and so, you know, there are concerns about the longevity of the pipe, the performance of the pipe, um, being utilized in the situation. It's, it's not that it may not ever be acceptable, it's, we just need more supporting information um, to, to offer anything than, um, to, to offer a no objection, we would need more supporting information that it would be an equal or better pipe.
Yeah, this doesn't have anything to do with using ACV in lieu of
Right.
It's, it's higher HCP and it's
Yeah.
So David, I know you put in the back of, uh, the specs on the stuff y'all are using. Is there, is there not any way that you can do those things to prepare, where we can move forward with this? I don't have a problem with using it, we just need to have a adjustment.
I don't disagree with, with, uh, Stephanie's assessment. Using the pipe that they had in the field is, is recycled, but still meets ACM testing requirements. Uh, you know, it's just not listed as acceptable, yeah. It's not as good applied for the question as.
It's easy to die. He helped you with that decision?
Yeah, no doubt, so, I, I got a feeling, I don't know why. All right, they, I, I like said, I hate to do it, but, uh, you know, some of that stuff has got to be reworked anyhow, so, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to deny, uh, number forty-two.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Forty-three, discuss and take action on Atlas Land Partners LLC request for variance to modify the minimum text dot requirement separation between fifty-four inch RCP in the construction plans for subdivision improvements plat twenty twenty-two oh four one.
To what?
Four foot.
It's two foot? I got a problem with that.
Well, I think
She going for it, concrete in between.
It's here, it's about the, the, the set pipes, uh, that it was being allowed. There's a reduction being requested.
So again, David, we talked about this, um.
Is our, by the way, RCP.
Yeah, yeah, th- th- this is concrete, um, and so basically what happened is they got too close. Um, um, they did bed them in stabilized sand, but there's no way to, to, uh, justify the compaction.
How close?
Unless you can get compaction with a one, with one foot minimum, but it's not, it's not as ideal as this place.
But what I'm getting at is you shouldn't have it tested, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and, and that's where I have the problem, is we don't have anything to justify the, the, the varianess of the cops. Uh, even though, like I said, they did go out and it's all set and stabilized, um, Stephanie may want to comment on this a little bit. Um, but I would be okay with it if there was some way to test it. But if, if you could come up with that, say we could, I believe, I'm not speaking for Stephanie, but I might be willing to work with you. But if you can't get it tested, I, I don't know what else to do. I mean, it's
How close is it then?
And well, they're a foot off.
Twelve inch.
Yeah.
Twelve inch separation of
One foot?
Yeah, one, two, two foot from inside wall to inside, or three foot inside wall to inside wall.
Yes, too close. And I had some pictures of it, I don't know what I've done with them, um, but
But it also, it also does have three feet of, uh, surcharge soil on top to spread the loading for any future traffic, whereas Textile has them, has a one foot.
Yeah.
There is consideration there, and RCP obviously takes five thousand PSI strength, so it's solid stuff, so, but
No way, no way to get some kind of compaction.
They'd have to ex, you know, they'd re-execute it.
Start it.
The triangle.
Yeah. So there again, I think we're in the same boat that it's actually.
I'm confident it was compacted, but
Yeah, I understand, well, you, you know, I, I know they've done what they could, but, um, it needs to be proved, to me and to, to Stephanie and everybody else who lives out there, in my opinion. So I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
Second.
Moving, saying to the on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Forty-four, discuss and take action on Sandy Saddle White's request for continued use of existing unpermitted structures on properties she purchased in twenty seventeen to be allowed to proceed with new permit for electrical service.
This is a property was purchased by the team, in terms of the lease that the property was originally developed. And I went back and looked at the appraisal record, I would turn the record, see if you verify that. And service after the appraisal. Place really usually takes a year, takes a while. Um, uh, our onsite wastewater regulations, initial ones with the place eighty, uh, our plain regulations, developed regulations with the place of eighty-seven, it, it sort of titters on the border of the flood bill regulations, but well within the onsite sewage regulations. And I can't give court advice at this point that you have jurisdiction to completely waive the requirement for a wastewater system unless the tract was over ten acres, right? Um, so what I would suggest, uh, for, of course, you, you, well, that's is that if you do not approve the variance, that you would allow my office, this particular case, to concede with the permitting while we're trying to give her, her issue, one of the, one of the issues, held up on new permitting, because we have this compliance issue. And normally you don't, you don't release new permitting when there's a property, and if the court wanted to allow her to see with her new permitting while we worked, uh, out the, the grandfather status permitting on this, uh, I, I would be open to that.
Yeah. I think I'm good with that. When, when we start getting that far back in time, it's
Trust me, it's difficult to file.
Yeah.
That's how big a track is.
Um.
Little tiny.
It don't matter where it was built.
Yeah.
Yeah, the reason I brought up the ten acres, the, the TCU has a current rule about tracks or ten acres or larger, we don't allow it under local, it's a local provision, but, uh, the only reason I raised that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with the continued use of the existing unpermitted structures. You want to give, Harry, the language of the motion you want in there?
Uh, yes, the, the court would allow us to, um, issue new permits for the property while resolving compliance issues on existing development.
Okay, your motion, that's my motion, second.
Moving, saying to the on favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. No executive session, public comments, I, we have one from Judah and Richard Myers.
Morning.
Morning. I'm David, Richard Myers, I'm in the, uh, forty-nine Black Forest Road, and I'm at Brandon. Our issue is, we have one way in and one way out. Uh, and we realize you guys are limited by something serious, you know, one of the special procedures in planning and development of drainage, the drainage, or, uh, dredging, uh, painting, paving the roads. So, uh, see what is involved in steps and procedures to get down and review. Right now, as I said, we only have one way in and one way out, and we have a senior agent, it is not great help. We don't know any other person that might be injured at any time, that could be a disaster like this week.
No.
No, they're going to have a hard time getting out of the Black Jack. It's just me, everything. I'm currently right now on Blackjack. We've got an access right next to the railroad tracks. It was probably a thirty eight, thirty six, forty inch culvert. It was. Washing out bad and it is four up the corner of that road which access Blackjack Cemetery. And the curve on ours, further down into that fifty two hundred yards is Canyon Creek. That is washing out terrible. There's potholes. Eight holes is really happy zigzag just to get around there. Further on down near Hopper Road. There are like, there are sections in there losing road base. You go further down into two notes. See, further down there on Blackjack Road is the state uh, park. But what I'm asking is finding a stopping point, a neutral point, what we have to do, apply for federal grants, any. I'm a public insurance adjuster. I fight the insurance company. I deal with attorneys and engineers a lot. I know the steps and procedures on trespassing when waters improperly flowing on a property. Our property is being flooded because of poor drainage design on Blackjack Road, that near Hopper subdivision. There's a pipe running in there that goes under the road, under Blackjack into my neighborhood. That corner is flooded into mine, into my pond, which is probably seventy year old pond. We moved there three years ago. That pond's basically been, I guess, in theory, a retention pond. When it overflows, it runs back down through the dry creek into Canyon Creek. So again, our property is being flooded because that is improperly done. They can design and develop a drainage pipe in west side of Blackjack Road going into that is curving into home creek. Take care of a lot of problems, alleviating flooding, probably ninety five percent of the flooding. Where there's fish. Our property pasture is being flooded improperly. In a flood map is improperly designed because of the years that this has been flooding. So that's another thing that I'll be working on. But I need to find out what I can get help from, design, what you guys are going to do. I realize like Brandon said, he's got limited budget. He can't do much, but the grading that has been going on during the past year at our prop on Blackjack Road has removed probably two inches of the road base. That, in my opinion, is another contribution of the current problem.
So this is just, you talk to us, we can't respond? If you can get with Brandon after court, maybe I'll go look something out and get something on the agenda. This is for you just to talk, we can't respond?
No, sir. I'm just giving you everything I.
Right. I just wanted you to.
I'm not standing there and wait for.
We we can't answer you.
Yeah, hopefully you.
Yeah.
I'm getting.
Yeah.
Go for it, please.
Yeah.
Damn.
As always, the woman has to come in and put it in the lawsuit.
It's okay, go ahead.
The emergency that we see and the reason why we're here actually today is because the road is washing away. And if we haven't met their great rain like we did just a couple of days ago, um, with fourteen inches. I'm afraid that the uh, road's gonna completely wash out and Mr. Aiden is not in any condition to sit sit it out. And I don't know all my neighbors, but I do know um, like the Arnold's, he he was in ICU for a long time, so he's in serious condition recuperating at home.
Tom.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Respond.
We we can't respond to you. I mean, no.
I got you. No questions from media commissioners court. Don't touch comment.
We have lots of rain.
Yeah.
Our areas had twenty five inches I poured out at mile. Lots of damage to relate to what y'all are talking about. We were working yesterday, still had people trapped to get out. And I know precinct three, a lot of people that can't get out of their homes, but there's been a, an event that I hope don't repeat, let's put it that way. I'd like to slow it down just a little bit.